Surely our door can be opened.
I don't know if he does. We have a charging station at City Plus. It's the closest stall you can park in.
Surely it's worth it.
It's always empty.
Good.
I'm good, yeah.
Okay. All this is in order. And we're going to say a special allegiance, what do you mean? Special allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Roxanne, there is no public input. All right. Do you have any amendments to the agenda? During the day, so we're actually the mayor's report. We... It seems to me like we've been gone from the term for five while, and it's pre-late, so that's unusual, but it's casual. The last time was July 15th. A lot of things have happened, and most worked since July 15th. But just some things that are... Hoping everybody has had a good... Our business community has had a good summer season. I think recreation has gone very well, so thank you, Beth, and all the people that work for you. I know Love Works is working hard on just finishing up all of these many projects that you guys have had, so thank you to all your people as well. Couple new things. Don't forget that school does begin 15th of August, so be very aware of all these people, little kids riding bikes and walking and crosswalks and all of that. On the 17th of August, that's a... Well, on the 16th, we do the water fight. That has become a fun tradition, and we thank the fire department for coming to Swenson Park to assist in all of that. And then on the 17th, there is a fundraiser. What is that playing? You guys put this fundraiser. It's for...
South Valley After Prom, Black Bear Park.
For that. Okay. And then there's following that is a street dance downtown. Bethany College students start arriving, and so a lot goes on here in August, so pay attention to all of the notices that are given out. And...
10-6.
Pardon me, sorry. All right. So we have a new person for our community. Dallas Davidson, am I right, sir?
Yes, that's right.
You got to step up to the podium. You are the new pastor at the Trinity.
Yeah, I'm Bethany's church.
Well, welcome to Linsburg, and welcome to the council. Right there.
Well, let's pray. And with all of you, thank you so much for this day. You've given us and the many blessings that we have. Lord, I feel honored to be here this evening to give this prayer, and, Lord, I just pray that you would be with this group as they talk about the business of Linsburg, that you would bless them. We thank you for each and every one, and, Lord, for giving them their time and their talents to make Linsburg a better place to be. God, we just, again, we thank you for them. We pray, God, that you would bless them this evening during this meeting. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you. I hate to dust it around, but I've got another meeting to be at.
That's all right. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Do I have to approve the consent agenda?
So, Luther.
Okay. Is there a... Okay.
Second.
Okay. Is there a consent to approve the consent agenda? Brett?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved? I don't think there's any one that's right.
Any... Application received. Yeah, received.
All right. Gary, planning on doing?
No report.
All right. Old Business?
The Old Business.
All right. And New Business? First item is Farmer's Market.
You guys move right along. I like that. I think I know most of you folks. I don't know Debbie or anything.
Joey?
Joey and Tony, and Mark, but the rest of us, I don't remember. And if you don't know me, I'm a councilor. I'm here representing the Linsburg Farmer's Market. Quick background. This thing started several years ago. I'm sorry, I don't know who we can, but in recent years, Wells Morrison kind of took charge of that. And he came to town at his church, Bethany, on a Thursday evening. And the reason of Thursday evening was we would come collect those candles or legumes or pancake feeds or whatever on Saturday mornings. And so anyhow, the intent of the committee, of the group, is to move our farmer's market to a different date and a different location. In choosing a location, I allowed them to use my property out at 206 Jackson. It's worked real good, but it's somewhat removed. We've had people say we don't know what's going on. I've tried to put some temporary signs up to make people aware of this. My request here tonight is to use the use of city property for the farmer's market, and it will be held on Saturday mornings, beginning at 7:30 and ending at 11:00 a.m. Nothing remains on the property, wherever it is, throughout the week, so vendors that come in, these are local people that have either baked or grown the product. It's not to buy and resell product. Three locations that we'd like to request, and I'm not sure where we'll end up, would be the lot south of the USD 400 office, the lot right east of this building, and Swenson Park. Okay? Now, since I've put the request in, since that date, I was told that David Hay has allowed permission for us to use the north side of his bank, which may even work. That's right, sadly, the coffee shop thing. I'm not sure which bank David just said.
He said the first bank.
Okay.
And the north side of the...
North side, there's a strip through there, the sidewalk. Then we'd set our tables up against the building where people could walk through. We'd be parking on the east side or parking on Main Street. Anyhow, my request here is to find out if there is a possibility of using city property for this purpose. The market seems to be growing. We don't want to stop it. There seems to be a desire by the public to find it, and so that's why I'm here. I don't know what the next step is. I guess you guys have debated.
Okay. Well, what is in the packet for council consideration is 100 block of South Main.
Okay.
Okay, so you're wanting to put other...
It'll be one location and only one location.
Okay.
We just need to pick a spot, and I didn't know if I needed to request every spot that the city owned, or if I was generally saying that it's either going to be there or here or up there.
What you have requested that the city owned would be Swenson Park, the parking lot south of USD 400 in the apartment lot here. Are you asking us to choose?
No.
Okay.
I'm asking for permission to use one of those three.
One of those three. Okay.
And I can't tell you which one it'll be because I have to go back to the other people and say, "Where do you want to go?" They've given us a green light.
I know that there is some concern about Swenson Park with that shelter because people rent it out, I think.
Where is your name at 7:30? I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I mean, they might be coming in. I don't have one yet, but I mean, that was just a concern that was expressed.
That's why I'm here.
Anybody want to make a motion and select a location, or...
Can we make a motion to allow permission at all three locations, even if it's not part of this packet?
The idea would be, Ken, that you would then advise us as to which one you're going to...
Yeah, or you get up early Saturday morning.
That would be helpful to us if we could plan.
We want to be in a spot where the public will find us.
Yeah.
There's no reason for anybody to sit for four and a half hours and not be able to see anybody. We're getting traffic out on my shed, but not the traffic that we think we'd like to see. So that's it. Safety, parking, and ease of moving the product to the location. Are the ones that we have to look at.
So the motion could be to offer, for instance, the three city-owned properties for consideration to be used. Now, does that mean that you would just select one?
Yeah.
Then, okay. I'll make the motion to approve the request to hold a farmer's market on Saturdays through October on the three city-owned parking lots. It includes the 100 block of... The parking lot on the 100 block of South Main, Swenson Park, and the parking lot east of City Hall.
And second?
Is there any further discussion? Do you understand the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Thank you.
And as I said earlier, it may not occur on the city property.
If they want to go north of the bank, that's where they'll land. Thank you.
As you...
Specialty of cereal malt beverage permit.
Meeting number one. I want for you guys to know I'm Ryan. You're here on a coach tour for this year's only fest coming up here in October. Eric, when you and I have kind of discussed over the last couple of months about having a beer tent in there, kind of the first agent that put it all together, but it is August and October. Our request tonight that we have a beer tent during regular hour right here in the parking lot below us. Saturday night, it's understanding we're going to have a... Lot or a bit of a blaze that we're going to be performing at the stage there, so we're going to open it up on the street for that time only during the blaze performance, and then at that time, we're going to take it down. Right now, I talked to Jim Moser tonight. We're working on the mission. It's either going to be a 20-by-40 tent or a 30-by-40 tent. We can't drill into concrete, so the water buckets are trying to position on that to make sure that they'll take out sidewalks based on that. But the tents are going to be right on the hill here. Our American Legion is going to be handling that. They're going to be at least two to three people that are all times checking out these, making sure everybody's 20 or older. We do have our standards that we're going to add and that we're going to card everybody with, and we have our standard that we've carded eating, drinking, alcohol beverages, and it's going to be beer only. We're not going to be doing beer on this one. The timeframe, like I said, we're going to put 10:00 a.m. to midnight on both days. I'm 99% sure it's not going to be the timeframe. Trying to work out the timing as far as what's going to be going on downtown on Friday. Friday night, if there's no traffic downtown Friday night, we're going to shut it down probably early after, early to late evening. If you ever been in the Stugger there on Friday and Saturday, it is a little congested in there, but we're not trying to get any business somewhere for marketing needs. We have some interest in some alumni coming back and having some classroom units be there. By no means do we want it to make it any... Get out of control to speak there, but like I said, our plan is to have a beer tent Friday and Saturday of the festival. Like I said, Saturday night after the concert, everything will be removed from the street. The street has to kind of get its stuff out of there as well. Our barriers are going to have some either rope and some, either some sort of barriers on the outside of it, so people can just kind of walk in there during the event. It's going to sell a beer during that timeframe. Like I said, the American Legion are going to have the food bin right now here as well compared to South Main. They're just sort of being called us out. For the festival in there, it's kind of tough to get during our timeframe to pull us out the whole time.
The application is coming from... You know, it's...
The Hillman's Fest application to the city, and according, I thought individually for the state. And we got the check coming up. I talked to Dave today, that he's going to give a proxy tomorrow and get that check right now. Something new, like I said, the festival trying to do is just kind of get another revenue stream in there. Like I said, hopefully, it's not a one-and-done type thing, but our intent is hopefully it'll go well and hopefully make a little bit of money out of it.
What's your position with the Hillman's Fest committee?
My coach here, Mr. E. Okay. Eric, I'm sure you can chart it now, but I'm kind of a person enough to share some stuff.
So do I hear a motion to approve this application?
Looking to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
I guess they have a question for chief. Do you see any problems, issues, and that you're conservative on all of this?
So you're going to have the... You want it here in the parking lot?
Yeah, we're going to have the entrance on the northwest corner of the tent. The tent there, we have... We could put the walls down if we wanted to, but it was my understanding that people kind of wanted to hear stuff on there. And then we're going to have ropes around the whole tent, so they're only going to be one entrance in and out of the tent. There's going to be two people checking out these and then one person probably delivering the beer.
You said something about extending it into the street. Would that be into this street?
Into, on Lincoln Street, just for Saturday night. I think the concert starts six or seven. Not during the day, any days, because we're having a farmer's market down there during the festival. So Saturday night, we'll be, you know, probably an hour before the concert. And a lot of it's going to depend on Friday night as far as traffic. If it's 5:00 and it's dead, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to keep it open. Midnight absolutely delays, but we don't want to go that late.
And so then you'll have security around that area then to make sure they don't go outside of the boundary?
Our American Legion is going to have at least four people there. Two people at the tent, and then on Saturday night, there'll be at least four people out there. It's kind of making sure that the people are inside the tent or inside the beer garden or at age. They're going to have our standards. We can get those in supply to their regard, talk some like that.
I just worry about them getting outside of the...
Their area.
Broke area.
Yeah, we'll make sure that people are wired. If you leave the road area, you're going to get rid of alcohol beverage. We don't want to get trouble that way.
And this is going to be what time in the morning to start?
Well, we say at 10:00 a.m. I really don't think we're going to open up at 10:00 a.m. Saturday, I think we're going to open up around 10:00 because the parade starts, I think, at 10:30 in case somebody wants to come in and have a beverage. Friday, but nothing else, I think it's around 12:00. Anyways, to get that issue going there before we had a chance to put a timeframe down, and then we just wanted to put something down on paper. But I know midnight at the latest, all nights. Saturday, probably tonight, depending on the concert. It was about Friday night. There's a smorgasbord going on. Some shit, I think it gets done around noon. So if somebody did want to come in there afterwards, I would say 9:00, 10:00 at the latest, probably.
Will you have somebody there in the tent overnight, or will you remove all the...
We're going to remove everything. Everything's going to take it down.
Okay.
That probably wouldn't be over a wall.
Ryan, you realize that this is a new thing for us, and the best thing you can do to be sure you can do it next time? Just to make it work.
Yes, that is our plan. I do not want to be a one-and-done here. I planned to be here two years from now, to even...
Wow, really?
Just for you.
Any other comments?
Just a question and clarification. So you'll have a tent down here. When you move to the street, is the tent still going to be open? So you'll have two locations?
We're not going to move the beer sale, so to speak, but if somebody wants to kind of like have recent lawn chairs out from Saturday night to listen to the blades, we're going to have to figure out that area.
Oh, so it'll just be, you'll just expand the...
We had to figure it out. See, we could just put a rope out from our tent entrance all the way out.
Aye.
Out type thing. I'm not sure I was going to go say, "Should we move it off?" But that's our plan, I guess.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just questions.
All right. Any vote? And the consentant that we allow the common sense committee to have a special tent, cereal malt beverage permit for October 18th and 19th. Okay. All of the people say aye?
Aye.
And the close? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
And to the region delegates who are going to control such play?
You're going to do a lot of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, council. So my first item for you tonight is the reusable bag. And we met back in April, I believe, with Progressive Christians of Linsburg to talk about how to reduce saving plastic bags in Linsburg. And what came out of that was some direction to think of some ideas. And so I worked with a group of high school seniors on their service day in May, and one of the things that came out of that was to design and sell a reusable bag. And so that's what we've got for us then is we've designed a bag. We, I didn't do, we mentioned the design. Chris Mullin here, who graduated in May from Smithville High School, designed a bag for us. And we have closed this design with Scott Hoffmanbach, by the way. So we've got this distinctive Linsburg bag. And so then we were looking at who could make this for us, and there are certainly plenty of folks who make reusable bags, but when you're looking at full design bag, which is what this is, image of it, when you're looking for full design bag, I had a lot of trouble trying to find companies that could do that for us. And Chris worked hard at this as well. Really, there was only one company that could do a full design bag. Getting a logo on a bag, not a problem. Getting a full design bag, difficult.
It's a difference.
Yeah.
Well, I should have brought an example of the, of what we don't want to do, but you probably have a couple in the home where it's a, you know, it's a bag-bag or something, and there's a logo in the middle that's about that big. And this is, you know, where the whole bag is designed. This is the same material and, you know... So instead of this being a square in the middle, it's, you know, corner to corner with our design.
Does that mean that the bag itself has been designed by Chris? That it has a box bottom and it's X number of inches tall and...
Well, you use a... They have sizes that they make.
Right.
Are you looking at that material or that?
Yes, I can pass this around. This is, what's nice about this is it's recycled plastic, and it's easy to wipe down. So, you know, if you have a blueberry burst or something, it's easy to wipe down. And I have a bag like this that I use already, and it's a nice, a nice material, in my opinion.
What are the dimensions of it?
So the dimensions of that, I think, are 12 by 13 and a half by 7. The bag that we're proposing is actually a little bit bigger. It'd be 13 by 15 by 7. The other piece of this is it would be resold to local merchants at our cost. So the, and I intend for that to be the price that you see before you, and also to cover the, we paid Chris for the design work for the game there as well.
All right. So we are wanting a motion to purchase or...
To purchase 1,000 bags from Custom Earth for $3,731.46.
Do I have a motion to approve this?
Make motion to purchase the 1,000 bags from Custom Earth for $3,731.46.
Do a second?
Second.
Moving to second to purchase these. Any discussion?
So these other vendors on the list here can't do that. Is that fair to say? You got big graphics for it, and Archer cannot do a bag like that?
The, or if they're not sure for sure, would be just a logo in the middle of the bag. Chris, can you speak to the graphics?
Big graphics would be through a purchaser at the McPherson. So there would be a charge on top of there to get it through a distributor. And also, the quality of bag wasn't quite up to what Custom Earth had, I thought. And the material wasn't 100% recycled, so it would be wasting plastic that is just going back into it that hadn't been recycled through. So I thought, in all my research, that Custom Earth was the best option, but the other ones just didn't appeal as much.
But Archer, you have Archer here as a possibility, and their price, isn't it actually less than...
Right, no, it comes down to product. The product that Archer was offering is a, it's a different material, and we would not be able to do a full design. It would be a logo, you know, a 5-by-5 logo on that bag.
So I'd have to say that I like the design of this bag. I think it stands out. It does, it is going to be something that will be attractive, I think, for people to purchase and promote Linsburg in a way because it is a full advertisement, if you will. Both sides of the bag.
That's all right.
What's the result wise for that?
Both sides, did you say? So you're going to be close, close to $4?
So these will be ordered by purchasers, or you will walk around and... I mean, have you thought about how you're going to market these? Who's going to market them?
Well, that's something that I'm still working on. We want to, when we go ahead and get the bags ordered, it'll take 10 to 12 weeks for the bags to get here. I know that Scott has expressed interest in buying some number of bags. We take them to the other mass retailer in town, for sure. I'd also present it as an opportunity ad hoc. We also...
Somebody could just come in and say, "Oh, you bought them?"
Not a single bag. You know, if somebody wanted to come in and buy 100 bags, sure, but we're not, we're not setting up to your retail location. We'd also look hopefully for Progressive Christians of Linsburg to take a role in promoting that.
I assume the setup fee is a one-time charge, 20, over 20% for a setup fee?
That would be based on how many bags you order, I'm guessing. So if you wanted to reorder, you'd probably have to pay the setup fee because how you make the bags, I'm guessing is they make a print, print them, and then move on. So it's based on how many bags you order for the one-time purchase. Is my guess I could communicate with the representative of customer.
I'd be curious if you did reorder if you had, if you had some free IP.
Yeah, I think the, we talked about this a little bit, and I, I guess I'm not, I'm not in the bag to tell this. Or it wasn't, hasn't been until tonight. I'm curious how long it would take us to get to 1,000 bags? And if I thought we were going to go through a master, I would, you know, we, obviously, if you had to spread that $600 to over 2,000 bags or 3,000 bags instead of 1,000, but if it takes as long to sell 1,000 bags, I think it might, you know, it's going to be, maybe the second setup fee.
Will it be a little further away?
Yeah, it should be. If we get on this morning.
Are retailers just going to resell on that cost, or are there going to be an opportunity for margin? Are the retailers just gonna resell that cost or are there gonna be any opportunity for margin?
Um, I, I mean, that's not something that I would like to dictate. So I, I mean, I think everyone in public will know what costs to get it to the retailers. And so that will make competition interesting. But if you want to sell 10,000 pieces, more power to you.
Any other comments? We're going to be covering $3,731.46, is that right?
Yeah, as I looked at this just now, I wonder, can we leave it open against some sales tax? That isn't accounted for?
We're taxed, we shouldn't pay sales tax. It's not good to leave it open.
So, so we get $4,331.46. Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
All right, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Chris.
Nice work. Thank you, Chris. Thank you very much.
Yeah, my second item for you is the dollar dollars. So we adopted this, you adopted this program on April 1st of 2019 to encourage new and existing customers to pay their bills automatically through ACH direct payment. Since implementation on June 1st, we've had 90 customers sign up. We've had 30 certificates that went out to a retailer and have come back in the city hall. So I don't know of the 90, how many have gone out to a retailer. We know how many have gone out to a retailer and made their way back to pay here at the hall. What I'm asking for you to do is, so I said I'd do an update and that we would kind of revisit the program at this point. So I would like for you to continue the ACH. It's my, it's our intention, staff's intention to continue for new customers. But that we would, that you would leave open the possibility that the staff would perhaps periodically offer for existing customers as, as the utilities he's fit in order, because ultimately it's gonna bring costs ideally. And the idea is that it's gonna bring costs down, both staff time and then also if we're avoiding credit card fees particularly, we can make the process go quicker.
I'd like to make the motion to allow staff to continue to use the dollar dollars to incentivize utility customers to set up automatic payment by ACH in an amount not to exceed $3,610.
Second.
Move to second to continue this program? Any comments or concerns or any discussion?
I don't know if I followed the discretion that exists in the festival race.
So again, is it? So we've come before you, this is our second time we've come before you with this for something that actually doesn't have a real high price tag on it. And I, as I was thinking about it, I thought, you know, we might say, you know, November would be an excellent time to run this promotion for existing customers, try to get some interest.
To get the dollar dollars?
To get the dollar dollars.
For all existing customers?
All existing.
Elliot, I was a little concerned that you were at the discretion of which?
No, 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 it was, it was when, when on the calendar we might do that. And so I would come before you again in November to say, you know, we decided that staff would like to do this.
The current motion is for a limit of $3,610. So when we hit that limit then, there'd be no more dollar dollars available?
That's correct.
But they could come back and ask for them?
Correct, yeah.
Everybody understand that?
A little confused, are you okay?
I have a different motion in front of me, but that's, that's.
That was the motion that was made, not to exceed $3,610.
Okay, anybody wish for that? All right, but we're not in Congress, are we? This is a significant question. Where are we, can we?
You're in the R B, you're committing this amount of dollars to this program.
Any other discussion?
David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
So legislature, the legislators have met. Some laws have been passed and we've finally got the books. And so now we need to approve the use of books with the updates in laws. First one we have is the standard traffic ordinance. It's put out by the Kansas City municipalities with the changes in the law. And it deals with traffic violations and I would like to have this approved.
All right.
So move.
Second.
And the consent is to approve the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas cities? What's your favorite change? What's your new favorite law?
Prepping for that one, didn't we?
Have you read it?
Yes, I have. I don't know if I have any that are really, I mean, one of the ones that I thought was kind of interesting was the, they allow police cars to use heavily tinted windows and mirror items for their windows when nobody else can use them. So I think that's kind of nice. But then there are the other ones, police cars are the only ones that can do it.
Can you cover up your license plate?
No, I don't think you can cover up the license plate.
Just curious.
But it's very helpful for police cars that have dogs in their vehicles so they can keep a heavy tent and it's supposed to be better on the elements. So I just.
Okay.
Pass.
Any other discussion here? All those in favor of approving this?
This ordinance needs to go through.
Oh, it's good.
For you. For 5185.
I'm sorry. Chris?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
David? Yes.
Ordinance 15.
5185.
5185 is approved? Okay, do you have another question?
And I have another ordinance, 5186. And this would be for the Uniform, what we call the UDOC or the Uniform Public Defense Code. It's basically looking at the changes in the law that have to do with misdemeanor crimes. So you have traffic and then you have misdemeanor crimes. So all of the new laws in here need to be approved. And so I'm asking for the approval of ordinance 5186.
And the motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 5186 to adopt the Uniform Public Defense Code book for 2019.
Second.
And move to second today?
This is a little, perhaps less favorable than the last one. Can we say what has been changed in here that you think really affects us or the general public? Are there things about intoxication or are there things about guns?
Seem about familiar with this question.
I don't want you to go through the whole list, but I mean, if you don't tell us here, we may not know what those are.
I think most of the changes in the criminal misdemeanor have to do a lot with very minor changes in wording. I don't think there's really a lot of big changes, just.
Yeah, usually they're very minor tweaks, but the reason they're included in a book like this is to bring them into compliance with what the state law is now. And most of the time, those state laws become effective July 1. And until you actually adopt these ordinance, you can have conflict between the law and the ordinance. Depending on the language that's in there and the state statutes. That can get you into some unenforceable situations for that one, not figured.
Yeah, and then there may be a law that says this, we wanted to do it a certain way per Kansas statute, 21 dash so and so and so. And then they'll add, in the new version, see weight versus. And that may not have been in the report, but it's important to have it in there so they add it. So it really doesn't change the law, it just adds verbiage. Okay, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, what happens if we don't approve this?
Just what I just said, the other thing, if you, if you charge an ordinance that's in a conflict with the state law, then you may not be able to justify the enforcement of it.
We definitely lose it in the field.
Well, it depends on the statute, but there is a risk that that could occur.
Okay, definitely is not a good word.
We're speaking, we're speaking of law. It definitely is not a good word.
Any further discussion? Okay, Roxy?
Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. 2020 budget.
2020 budget has been published. We had a hearing, a public hearing with no input. From a general fund standpoint, the mill levy stack, not recommending any utility rate changes within this budget. Also outlined, it's a five-year capital improvement program for 2020 through 2024. On the utility side, as I said, we're not recommending any rate increases or rate changes. We will be looking at solid waste during the year because of the annual increases we receive from the McPherson area solid waste utility. But that doesn't mean that we will be recommending. We may, but it's not recommended in the budget. With that, we've had several meetings, starting in May. It was our first CIP meeting. And the budget before you is for consideration and recommended for approval.
All right. Somebody make a motion to approve this, the 2020 budget?
Motion to approve the 2020 City of Lindesborre budget, pass.
Second.
Move to second today? Any discussion?
I just think this is a good opportunity for Greg to remind our listeners how we compare in mill levies to cities that compare with lies across the state. I've got it here.
Yeah, if you were excited, you'd have.
I would do that. Let's see, if you look at the city property tax rate in a broader context of 12 mill levy of 124.448 mils, Lindesborre ranks even better. Out of the same 139 cities, Lindesborre ranks as the 10th lowest total mill levy. The range for 12 mill levies is from a low of 111.725 mils to a high of 249.521 mils.
Thank you, Betty. Anything to know? And it was, you made a motion and somebody seconded it. Any further discussion on this? Can we do this, please?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All in favor of approving the 2020 budget, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
With the post, motion is carried.
Much of the trail extension is remote and far away from our city. So grateful to the electric department and Greg for offering up a trial basis of solar luminaire that they'll try in a couple of places. This, this particular light fixture will work at night without any direct connection to the electric grid. It will charge during the day and then programmable to any range that we want. But likely we'll do it based on the photocell daylight in the works at night time. And then this is the feature of the one we picked also, that it will dim if there's no activity or motion in the area. So that it will save battery power when there's nobody around to need it. We're recommending two locations. One at the crossing, Wells Fargo, Bethany Homes, the living border where we first met, is Church. And then another one somewhere near the northern origin of this trail extension, near the overpass. It's kind of a wooly area. If this works out, then we'll start to consider budgeting in the future. A slow build out of these particular, I can even see them down the south. There's one trail around Riverburg where we run a lot of lighting.
How tall is it?
So in the little graphic, that is the taller one of the two?
I believe so, very. Basically falls in.
Okay, a motion to approve this?
I'm making a motion to purchase two solar power lights from First Light Technologies in the amount of $4,540. Second?
Move to second today, to approve these?
I was a little confused when I looked at these things to see whether the one you're talking about directs all of the light downward.
No, it actually is a nice, there are some schematics of the.
I saw those, but how I'm talking about this and the other bill.
Oh, no, I don't.
No.
Yeah, thank you. Very correct.
They are, how are they installed? They?
On three bays, we'll do it all in-house off the streets. We'll have them up, limited there to a few people. And they'll be curving that day.
Any other discussion? Ed?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. Well, good evening to you. One of the things I take pride in is attention to detail. And as I walked my way through my first major street repave, curb together, I noticed an opportunity to miss some details. The street is coming along rather well. People not been by and noticed, or not talked to back here about, or begging about how it's going.
It's going very well.
But we did have an opportunity to miss some of the paving that we moved along. My original estimates, last year I looked at a lot more of what we needed to do. I cut that back just to try and stay within certain budget numbers. The reality is, as you move along and you start removing curb together, you find that there are places that it doesn't work to cut corners. It needs to be pulled off to certain places to maintain the structural integrity and try and accomplish what you're trying to do. Through that process too, we also ran into some areas where patching where needed and there was any smoke around on that as well. Now that the project is all done, as far as the curb and gutter, we did get everything replaced. I think that I felt needed to be done at this point. There are still some places that curbing gutter were not replaced, but they're overall in good shape. There are a few places that still hold some water. There are a few places that still hold some water, but we can't do a whole lot about that because the grade of the street and the curbing is what it is and you can't change that without major work. So I come to you this evening to request a motion to approve nine thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents for the cost overrun of the West Lincoln curbing gutter replacement.
All right, we hear motion.
So.
Second.
We've been seconded to approve this, any discussion?
So what hasn't been done to this point will not be done?
Correct.
Okay.
The curbing gutter that has been replaced is what we will replace. There are a few places where APAC has gotten into with the equipment, that they will have to go back and replace, but they're just smaller, there's no big areas that need to be replaced. This pricing seems pretty much in line with the other pricing we had on the original estimate. Yeah, yeah. The only main factor that really changed that was patching and allowing the pricing to be different than the original last one was.
Any other comments, discussion? Karen, yeah, Roxy, Rick?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Chris. Is there no seconded discussion?
No.
Okay, any others?
Couple things, in your latest Kansas Government Journal, there's information about the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference. We had sent some information out prior also via email following up to find out who would like to attend. The conference is October. Twelve through fourteen in Overland Park. And if you would like to attend, please let us know sooner rather than later. We have reserved some rooms. And we just need to know who to register for the conference. So if you could let Roxy or Cassie know sooner rather than later, appreciate it. Also, using TownCloud now for the agenda management, just some additional feedback from, from your side, whether it's user friendly, user friendly. One of the reasons we went with this particular application is that it was on a month-to-month basis, so we had some flexibility if we didn't like it. We weren't locked in for a year. So any positive media feedback?
I think once I quit looking from drop logs, it worked much better.
Also, a word from esteemed councilmembers, from Betty Nelson, that you have the browser back there, and don't hit the mail back there.
Okay, that's all I, oh, and don't forget to sign the budget certificate before you leave the seat.
Anybody else have any other orders? I have one, and I've had many, many people concerned about fifty-five mile per hour speed limit along, what's the name of that?
Wells Fargo, Rose Harbor.
Wells Fargo. The majority of them are, people live out in that area, and this is a county road, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So I've been asked, what's the best way to have the county addresses? Ask one question, what is the best way?
I've had a couple of people approach me, my recommendation is that several people sign a letter, submit it to city council as a request, and then as a city, we can represent their interest to county public courts and county commission.
Does that need to be done within the scope of a council meeting?
I mean, that request, I mean, if they can mail, they can, I think it would be good to have the city council endorse the request in county commission.
Yeah, legally, anybody can contact the county commission if they wish to, if they want to send something directly. I think just a question of is there added weight at the city?
I think from a, from a political standpoint, I think it has more, more bearing if the city council's going to.
So Barney's council meeting, is it changed the limits? So, okay.
Do they change the, what's the issue?
The issue is the highway from the cemetery that comes into town.
They changed the fifty-five, and it wasn't before.
No, it's fifty-five, and I think with the trail crossing and added pedestrian, bicycle traffic, that takes us a greater concern. Not that it wasn't a concern before, but it's a greater concern if you have no pedestrians and bicycle traffic.
Are there other people here in this, you heard it, okay.
For bike, for the cemetery.
Where does it begin in?
Where does it, the city limits?
The fifty-five, the fifty-five.
Starts just past Suppley.
Right away.
Yeah, it's pretty quick.
It's immediate.
I thought, I noticed that, too, that was, I get like the faster.
As long as you don't hit.
When you go through it down by Emerald Lake, though, the entrance is there, that's like, you're already going fifty-five, and there's traffic, and it's, I definitely thought that before.
So do we, do we recommend to the county that it begins in a certain place or, or what?
We, we would have control up to the city limit, but beyond that, we would not, it would be up to them. To change it out there, would it probably require a traffic engineering study because it is technically a wide open space? And there are, if you look at the, the speed zone definitions for commercial, there's a certain speed limit, if nothing else, for residential, there's a certain speed limit. But in, except in a specific area, the general speed limit is fifty-five. In order to change that, it would require an engineering study to do. We could control it to the city limit, but we would probably also have to do an engineering study.
Last week.
What?
Addicts, so.
Going to take over maintenance.
Take over maintenance, and you're still going to have to do the engineering study because if you're going to change it out in an open area, like those three hundred yards or whatever that is, that's open, that would be by law a fifty-five mile an hour zone, and you have to afford it to change.
I mean, do the, do the county conventionary studies, would we vote on that?
Well, I, I don't, yeah, I mean, if they would drop theirs to thirty-five, or whatever the case might be, I don't think you'd have anything to worry about.
All right, so if you do have people that you, have spoken to you about a concern about this, I think our goal should be by the September nineteenth meeting, that we will have, we will have letter signatures, and it will be on the agenda for the nineteenth September.
August.
Nineteenth of August. Any other questions?
Hi. As a chair of the committee for the car show, I just wanted to thank Gary and the staff of the park, it's probably the best it's ever looked in the nineteen hundreds we've done. So wanted to give Gary a shout out.
This is a great car show.
Next year's plan?
Next year's plan.
All right, boy. All right, do I have to know what you're saying?
Second.
All right, we need some more than that. They can all hear it fine.
It's going around the board.
Maybe for the indication.